All to order, would you please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, the roll please.
Mayor Virchell.
Here.
District One Morissette.
Here.
District Two Yaku.
Here.
District Three Bernard. Here. District Four Tewinkle.
Here.
District Five Hoggard.
Here.
District Six Vanslow.
Here.
Would like to welcome Kurt Tewinkle to your first official city council meeting. So, welcome. At this point in the agenda, we ask for comments and suggestions from citizens present on anything that isn't on the agenda. So if there's anyone here that would like to address the council on any item that's not on the agenda, please come forward. Andrea?
Good evening, I'm Andrea Jorgensen with the Hudson Area Chamber Commerce and Tourism Bureau. And I thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight to invite you to our upcoming Yellowstone Trail Heritage Days event. It's coming up on the weekend of May 11th through the 13th. And we've included many new items to the weekend's events this year. I'd like to invite you to the Wheeling and Dealing Gangster Cruise, which is happening on that Friday, May 11th. And also, the FIPS will be hosting an all automobile silent film festival as well. Again, this year, we will be hosting a car show as we have in the past. And a whole multitude of historical events celebrating the history of Hudson. We've also added a bicycle ride that will be traveling the trail in combination or hosted by the American Cancer Society. And we will again be hosting Randy Sabine, who will be giving a fiddling performance on Saturday night at the FIPS Center for the Arts. So we ask the community of Hudson and yourselves to come out and join us in this great event celebrating our Hudson history on the 100th year anniversary of the Yellowstone Trail. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Consent agenda?
To approve the public hearing and regular meeting minutes of April 9th, 2012 and the organizational meeting minutes of April 17th, 2012. To approve claims for payment in the amount of $458,527.81. Additional information is available in the Clerk's office on request and is posted on the city's website. To approve the issuance of five regular operators licenses for the period April 24th, 2012 through June 30th, 2013. And to approve the renewal and issuance of five regular operators licenses for the period July 1st, 2012 through June 30th, 2014.
Do you pull those?
And to approve the issuance of four temporary operators licenses to be used June 29th through July 1st, 2012 during the Hudson Booster Days. Additional information is available on request in the Clerk's office. To approve the issuance of a temporary Class B Retailer's License to the Hudson Boosters Incorporated to sell beer and wine, June 29th to July 1st, 2012 in Lakefront Park during Hudson Booster Days events. To approve the issuance of a Class B Beer and Class C Wine License to Ye Lin Incorporated, doing business as Drag and Pearl, at 420, I'm sorry, 431 Second Street contingent on successful building and fire inspections and receipt of a copy of their restaurant certificate and the Wisconsin seller permit and upon surrender of the alcohol beverage license from the previous owner. To approve the Stipe Show Carnivals to be held May 10th through May 13th, 2012 in Plaza 94 Outer Parking Lot contingent on receipt of issuance of a direct seller permit. To approve the 2012 Stormwater Utility Budget of $139,100 as submitted. To approve the issuance of a Taxi Driver's License to Jennifer Campo, 305 Main Street, Somerset, Wisconsin. To approve barricading Locust Street between Second and Third Street on the second Friday of each month from May through September for the Locust Street Car Show. To approve the annual Ragnar Relay Foot Race, August 17th and 18th, 2012 as proposed. To deny the request to allow open burning of leaves in the city. To approve the high school homecoming parade to be held Friday, September 14th, 2012 as proposed.
That's a different, it's Wednesday, the 12th, correct Marty? The homecoming parade is September 12th, the Wednesday? Should be Wednesday, September 12th.
Okay. To place on file the quarterly reports of the police chief, fire department, and the monthly report of the finance officer and the Sankara EMS Commission minutes of April 11th, 2012 and the Public Utility Commission minutes of April 10th, 2012. And that is all.
Move for approval. Is there a second? There's one other correction, the Stormwater Utility should be 193, 100. You said 139.
193, 100, sorry.
Roll call.
Tewinkle?
Yes.
Bernard?
Yes.
Morissette?
Yes.
Yaku?
Yes.
Hoggard?
Yes.
Vanslow?
Yes.
Okay, first item on the agenda was the renewal and issuance of regular operator licenses for the period of 7/12 to 6/30/14.
Mr. Mayor, recuse myself.
Okay, is there a motion to approve?
For approval.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. Next item on the agenda is review quotes submitted for the 2012 Broadleaf Control Program. Laura, you want to take this?
Sure, you have three bids in front of you from True Green, Byalan, and LCS. The Public Works Committee had some discussion about this. You know, with the idea that Byalan, we thought was a Hudson-based company. And we looked at the possibility of issuing the, allowing them to do the project. They don't however fall within the 2% local stipulation that we put on being able to allow a local bidder to bid higher and still get the project. They fell outside of that and furthermore, they're not a City of Hudson-based company. Their website says Schommer Drive, they have a P.O. box in Hudson, but the, what am I trying to say? A procurement policy suggests that they must be in the City of Hudson. So, we were wrong in thinking that they were in the city and they fall outside of the 2%. So with that, the Finance Committee unanimously agreed that we should issue the contract to True Green.
Any, or is there a motion to approve?
I will move that.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Discussion. Anybody want to say anything about that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Next is a review quote for roof repairs for the Grand View Park Building. Laura, you want to do this one too?
Sure. Three bids came in. The range is fairly significant, the low bid was from Johnson Construction at 3712. The funds will come out of the Grand View Park Fund. So the amount is 3,712 and I will move that for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the 2012 capital budget. Neil?
I think. The information you have in front of you was, has been modified by, or there's been a recommendation for modifying it from the Finance Committee. Excuse me. The city from the bond issuance, 2011 bond issuance has roughly $981,000 remaining. The initial recommendation from the Public Works Committee utilized $920,000 of those funds. And that's what is shown on the handout. The changes that were recommended by the Finance Committee were there's a line item for crack filling and flex patching the boat launch parking lot. The initial recommendation was that those funds would come out of the parking fund. The revised recommendation is that those come out of the long-term notes. And I think I got, let me take one step back. Of the, there is $981,000 left from the 2011 note issuance. The initial recommendation was to use 920 of that, so we had $61,000 left. So of that $61,000, the $5,000 for the boat launch parking lot would be part of that. The additional funds would be used for street reconstruction. The other modification that was made is on the handout, there was $320,000 recommended for Locust Street reconstruction after discussion at the committee. That would be allocated to, for street reconstruction in general. So the change would be that street reconstruction, there would be nothing designated for Locust Street this year with the thought that Locust Street and Vine Street would be done in the future out of the next round of bonding. So there'd be $376,000 available for street reconstruction that would come out of long-term notes and then the $5,000 for the boat launch parking lot. So this would fully utilize the funds from last year's bond issuance.
Questions? Comments?
Is the 39,000 from last year still undesignated then or did we?
Correct, no, there's additional, as you'll see down on the bottom left, $39,500 that was unexpended last year, that's undesignedated, which could be used, for example, for street projects or something else. The thought was, the Finance Committee's discussion was just kind of leave it in an undesignedated account right now. And then once the bids come in and it could be determined how the money would be distributed.
But the $60,000 we put into the street construction?
Correct. There's also discussion about the half ton trucks, those type of things. So Tom, for now, we're just going to order one and then again see where we were towards the end of the year in case we need that money for street construction projects.
I think for clarification's sake, the carryover from last year from 2010, 2011 is more information, oh no action, has to be taken by the council to reappropriate those. Those funds are out there, they're appropriated, they're available to be spent. So the $981,000 would be an additional appropriation of funds for capital projects.
Well, I was just trying to do the math when I was sitting in the gallery and I, if my math is correct from everything that was moved, to get to the total amount that Tom was thinking we would need, are we $50,000 short still then for street repair, for what we need done? Or am I adding that on top of the $200,000?
She was wondering what the total, your estimate for total time was for those three projects that were discussed.
635 for Grandview Drive, Carmine Oral, and the alley.
So we still have to find $50,000?
We'd have 576, but you know, once we get the bids in for sure, then you could make determination whether you wanted to pull, only get one truck this year or use that undesignedated from last year.
Oh, that's not with the one, possible with the one truck, but that's, so then definitely still have 20, okay.
Right.
The point is we're still short about $55,000.
Correct, if the bids come in what Tom is estimating, but if they come in less than.
Right.
Dennis, you want to say anything about street repairs that we talked about in the meeting? If you'd come up front?
Anything in particular you'd like to?
What you feel we would need to do to catch up on our street repairs?
We had done a real preliminary analysis a while back, I think I shared it at Public Works Committee, not recently, again, a while back, that the city does an analysis of all the streets in the city through a Whistler Report. And based on the ratings, you can tell if a street needs reconstruction, needs milling overlay or just needs maintenance. We assigned dollars to that report as an exercise and came up with close to four and a half or five million dollars if the city wanted to get every street back up into good condition, which obviously you don't do that. But that's about how much money you need to get the streets back to good condition. So you, you know, need to spend a fair amount more than you're spending now to get caught up.
Questions? Again, our bonding, we bonded two years ago, so we saved our bonding fee, we only paid one bonding fee of 25 to 35,000 instead of paying two. So we bonded for two years, so we saved that $35,000 roughly.
And as I noted in Finance, if the council next year determines they want to do whatever they want to do with regular street repairs and also want to do Vine Street separate, you could issue one bigger bond or issue two, you know, separate bonds at the same time, so.
Any other questions?
Can I ask Tom a question about?
Sure, Tom?
Tom, can I ask you a question, sorry. Sixth and Seventh Street, the alley there, the Sixth and Seventh Street alley, which I think you said is about $45,000. What, I'm not familiar with the, what's going on with that alley, I'm just curious.
That alley is, has never been asphalted. Probably about 10 years ago, we went through all the alleys in the city and did alleys, that one was omitted for one reason or another. Since then, we constantly patch and repair the alley, it's rough. The water slopes toward some of the residences and we have some issues with ponding and repairs and.
Does it flood there during the storms too?
The water generally runs toward the buildings, which is a concern.
So if you paved that, well, it's going to help.
Well fortunately, there's a storm sewer that goes probably mid-block there that we should be able to, you know, work in a couple of catch basins. And if we grade the alley right, we can probably catch most of the stormwater through some catch basins.
Okay.
That's Sixth and Seventh between what, Vine and?
Actually, it's on River Street in between Sixth and Seventh and it's a dead end alley that goes toward the train tracks.
Okay.
I did go out and look at it, it's just a mess. It was a real mess.
Well, and I know that was a request from about, you know, last year that we, maybe a couple of years ago.
I just don't know what street I'm going to refer to anymore because I used to call, ask if everything was Grandview Bradbad or not. Now I don't know, I don't know what I'm going to do, so.
Okay, any other questions?
Yeah, of the $5 million to catch up to be an A plus, well, is that an A or A plus or B or?
What's the number, one through five?
Yeah, it brings us back to fives.
Yep, that was the estimate that brought us back to fives, wasn't it then? When we did, when we did the exercise? It'll get you back to a five. On a one to 10 scale.
Half way there.
Any other questions? Okay, is there a motion to approve our capital budget for 981? $981,000?
I'll make a motion to approve the budget of 981,000, what the.
As amended.
As amended.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next, we have a request from United Gear and Assembly for issuance of industrial revenue bonds. Resolution 7-12, initial resolution for preliminary approval of United Gear and Assembly, Inc. Project and authorization preparation of necessary documents and materials and resolution 8-12 waiving the bidding requirements. Mr. Donald?
Again, last week, received a phone call from Mr. Kevin Frain, the President of United Gear and Assembly. Their company is literally bursting at the seams in their 1701 Livingstone Facility. They also lease a building on Industrial Street, which they're expanding their operations. They respectfully request the City of Hudson issue with a maximum of $10 million of industrial revenue bonds. There's no obligation of the city on the, in bonding or is it an obligation against the city's credit? Mr. Kevin Frain is here tonight, if you have specific questions. Two resolutions, one is the preliminary approval, initial resolution, starting in the process of issuance of the industrial revenue bonds. The second is a request by United Gear that the city waive their bidding of the project because this is a private corporation. They want flexibility as far as bidding process. There is a minor modification from the amended resolution I, that was sent to me today and I just caught it after a presentation of Finance Committee and there is a reference to 140, whatever the address for Industrial Road. It actually should be Industrial Street. So that modification in that resolution should be made, would require two separate considerations. Mr. Kevin Frain is here tonight. Again, one of the bits of information they received in your packets was the potential job creation from this investment. They're projecting an approximately 78 jobs will be created. Currently, they employ 281, so it'll be approximately 350 some jobs. That would be a total which makes them one of the largest employers located within the City of Hudson.
Questions? Would you like to hear from Kevin at all? Anybody?
I'm going to suspend the rules.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Bernard?
Yes.
Morissette?
Yes.
Yaku?
Yes.
Hoggard?
Yes.
Vanslow?
Yes.
Tewinkle?
Yes.
Move to adopt resolution number 7-12.
Is there a second?
Yeah, I'll second that.
Discussion, any more discussion? Just want you to be aware, it has no impact on the city's credit rating. We're not, it will not affect our borrowing capability.
No obligation.
And we have no obligation, so just, we've done it before and this is for profit. Again, if it was for nonprofit, we may have some other issues, but it isn't. So just for everybody's point of reference, you had something else?
One of the provisions in the resolution is that Section 5, the company has agreed that any and all costs incurred by the city and bond council in connection with issuance of the bonds, whether or not the bonds are issued will be paid by the company. So they have agreed to that stipulation.
Okay. Any questions? Comments?
I was impressed that United Gear Services, Caterpillar, John Deere, various other companies, it seems like a pretty solid business, so. I think you're doing a great job.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Move to adopt resolution 8, oh, suspend the rules.
Second.
Roll call.
Morissette?
Yes.
Yaku?
Yes.
Hoggard?
Yes.
Vanslow?
Yes.
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 Now go ahead.
Move to adopt resolution 8-12.
Second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Final comment, there will be a public hearing on this issue held at a future date. Bond council and United Gear has respectfully requested that council, or that public hearing not be scheduled. They want to work out a few details as far as the more specifics of the projects that'll be proposed. But at future date, the public hearing will be, will be a public hearing notice and a public hearing will be held prior to the common council considering the issuance of the bonds.
Okay, thank you. Next item on the agenda is docks on city property west of First Street between Orange and St. Croix Street.
Mr. Mayor, I have to recuse myself.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I guess under a city attorney's advice, I'll have to recuse myself. But I do reserve my time as a private citizen to comment.
Okay. Is there anybody else that has?
Well heck, can I?
The last couple of years, the city has had some issues with boaters wanting to anchor dock boats on the west of city property on between First Street and Orange Street and St. Croix Street. The police department, the DNR have been involved, they had difficulty enforcing our ordinance sections. See a copy of, that we have. And DNR regulations because of the existence of dock are not in compliance and have asked that we clarify the issue so the policy can be consistent and applied to all. The city also stated some major, started some major cleanup along the trail last fall and discovered some abandoned, an abandoned dock, a canoe being used and left there by a third street property owner. Multiple items and some being reclaimed and a lot of debris. The issue was raised that we were not, they were not on city property and they did not have a right to be on private property. That is city property. The research was done, our files assist, our files to assist with all matters. See the attached boat dock summary, some of the history. On January 2012, a letter with a survey form attached was sent out to 19 First Street property owners to inform them of our cleanup efforts and request their assistance with boat dock inventory. There are 12 responses with five owners not owning a dock and seven owners having docks of various sizes. Attached is a map with the green area being noted, the property owners who were sent letters with responses marked with an X indicating those docks and a no indicating those that did not have one. And the yellow area is city property. We also had a meeting March 9th, summary attached, with the police chief, the DNR representative, the public works chairman and staff members to review issues. Information was forwarded to the city attorney for legal review. It was then decided that we should issue, that the issue should be presented to the Public Works Committee and Common Council prior to any letter being sent. Additional information of Wisconsin statute 30-12 also applies to the dock issue and the city attorney reviewed as well. Her comments were incorporated in the issues and concerns options, see attached. She also informed us of new legislation, but it has not changed the situation for the city as the common council has not, has or has not given permission for any non-reparian owners to install docks. The staff recommendation is to proceed with what has been done in, to be in compliance with regulations and limits the city's liability and staff time. There was a motion by, out of Public Works, it was a two to one, that we notify property owners to have their docks removed. Comments? I think everybody knows, well, maybe not everybody knows the history.
Is there any provision in the legislation to allow for licensing or permitting?
We, I think our city code allows that.
The city code says that you cannot install a dock without authorization by the council. So, and there's, I did talk, talk with Paul Sickman and he said the city as owner could. You cannot convey a property interest, you can't convey an easement. So any permission would strictly be, would not be an interest in their property. They could not pass that along to anybody. They could not, and the DNR said it should only be for at the most two years to avoid it from being considered a conveyance. But by statute, you cannot make any conveyance of reparian rights.
And if in fact, we wanted to give permits out, would we be required to give them to all of the City of Hudson residents? Or would we be forced to?
And the fact is, it's city property, it's public property. So that, I mean, that's a policy issue, that's a question, why would some property owners just because, or residents of City of Hudson have more of a opportunity to place a dock on city property than other residents just because they happen to own property near the river? But that's the, you know, understandably very difficult issues you get into when you're considering possibly, that's one of the issues, giving permission to private people to install private docks on public property.
So let's say we want to do that, can we work, can we do some sort of lease agreement?
Well, you can't do a lease, you can't do a real estate conveyance. I'm not, as we speak, certain of the limits of that, but it's nothing that can be transferred to someone else with their property.
Use the term permit.
Sorry, okay, permit agreement.
And it's got, the DNR guidelines, and I believe it's in the administrative code, it's got to be for no more than two years.
Can it be renewed yearly?
Sure.
Well, unknown, you know, it's, it's going to be a matter of policy. It cannot, it's got to be very clearly stated that this is not a conveyance of a property interest. It does not attach to the property they own. It's not transferable. No rights accrue except for what's given under the permit and it cannot be for more, for more than two years. So I would say you can't promise a renewal.
No, but it can be reviewed and renewed, possibly.
You know, any kind of, if you're thinking of going down that path, I think you'd really need to flesh out probably in committee what sort of policy you might want to have. Because you're going to have to consider also potential liability. You'll be having private docks installed, I mean, if you had such a policy on public property, what sort of liability might attach to the city? It'd have to be clearly indicated that those are private docks, not maintained or anything by the city. But at the same time, you have the public using the property there. So there's a lot of issues that I think you'll need to flesh out, discuss and think through if you wanted to have some type of policy like that.
Okay, so I just want to clarify what our options are. One is removal of docks, kind of end of story. Another one is the city installing docks.
Yes.
And determining a policy for their usage.
Yes.
But city install.
City-owned, installed, maintained.
Liability.
Well, then the city is, yeah, it is, it's putting in, it's similar to, you know, docks it has out at the boat launch. The city maintains them, they're city property, they're part of the city's park system then. So you could have slips or something whereby, again, you establish a policy and a procedure. a procedure for people renting presumably a slip in those docks.
Okay, and then the third option is for the city to authorize installation of a pier or dock to a non-reparian owner, so that could be potentially anyone in the city? And then limit, you know, usage to, like you said, less than two years.
Yes.
So, in that case, we would be authorizing them to install their own dock.
Yes.
Okay.
I mean, it would depend on the policy, but yeah, I would imagine, why would the city want to be involved?
Well, okay, so the three options are no docks, city installing docks, or the city authorizing individuals to install docks, but the city would still have?
Would permit.
You'd permit them, yeah. And all, any docks that are installed are subject to the requirements under DNR in terms of size.
We can limit the permit still to, we can limit the permit, the permit not opened up to the whole city.
Well, you need to make, you would need to make that decision.
Right.
And come up with a policy that reflects the wishes of the city in terms of use, basically what you're saying is private use of the public's riparian shoreline.
How, how do we, how do we deal with the on the on off here, is that their dock or is that city dock?
We have a lease with them.
With who, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
The, like, the, the, that, that boat down there?
Yeah, that's subject to a lease of a certain term and I think they maintain it, they own it, I don't have it in front of me right now, but it is a lease agreement.
So, it is their dock? Yes.
I believe so, yeah.
Is that right, Tom? Okay.
I'm leaning towards option three, that's all I'm gonna say from now.
So, we've got a lot of people here that I think want to say something, or is it the council want to hear from them?
Sure.
Absolutely.
All right, how many people would like to speak tonight? Is there, I guess there isn't, well, let's see, all right. What's a good timeframe? How much, three minutes, is that, is that?
I'd stick with two.
You'd stick with two?
Well, the only reason I say that is you gave two minutes for the.
I gave two and a half the next time, so I was just trying to, there's less people here that want to speak.
I'm just, just.
I just don't want to cut people off, I wanted to give their, you know, give them their two cents worth or five cents worth, so we'll go three minutes. Is that all right? All right, who wants to start? If you could give us your name and your address, please.
I will, Jerry Kleckert, I'm even thinking my address, eleven oh five First Street in Hudson. My association with the docks and the waterway go back probably twenty-five to thirty years here in Hudson. Back to the old Hudson Hotel when it was still in existence, a derelict building owned by Duffy Harris, which after he died, the building was razed and the lot was available for sale. I looked at that lot where the possibility of multiple residential, along with that investigated the, what the relationship was to the water rights and what, what potential it was. At that time, I was told by the city it was owned by the railroad, that there were docks out there and the railroad had not objected to any docks, but that if the railroad had abandoned or decided not to maintain the property, that the homeowners or property owners along the way would have first right to buy that property. That project did not go through, but a few years later, I then purchased a house at eleven oh five First Street that had a dock on it. As part of that process, I looked into the dock situation with Hudson. At that time, I was told that the city owned the land, but that they had grandfathered the docks in and the usage of the docks. I asked what happened to the right of the public or the property owners to buy, and I was basically told that in lieu of that, why the, the docks had been grandfathered in for usage, and so therefore it really wasn't an issue because we had the ability to use it out there. A few years after that, I looked at putting a sailboat or acquiring a sailboat, again went to the city to inquire about docks, was told again, there were no restrictions on docks, docks were grandfathered in, there was no requirements, and basically anything was okay out there.
One minute, Jerry.
Pardon?
Got a minute left.
Okay. In more recent times, talks with neighbors has yielded the same, the same results. And so, it comes down to the fact that the city has had a consistent policy for the last twenty-five years in terms of I as a property owner, and it, to me, would be an injustice to just take that away without, take the right away, and even more than that, because we've made decisions, financial decisions and property decisions on it. But even more in that credibility with the city, does this mean that we can't really trust what we hear from the city anymore? Twenty-five years, we heard basically the same story, but does it mean that we have to get written documents every time we get an opinion on a fire code or inspecting code or zoning? We have to document what we have in a time when governments are being questioned, why that's a difficult issue. Second position to take, which the city could take, is basically look at the docks, we are where we are regardless of how we got here, we've got X numbers of docks, this is the starting point for establishing for the future, and what regulations do we need, what rules do we need to help guide us as we, as we come through the future? I can understand that sort of position and I can support that sort of position. Another area to look at is.
Jerry, we're, we're out of time.
Got it, thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name is Dean Hanson, one zero zero one, First Street, Hudson. My main comments are, First Street is a very valuable area to this city, and for tax bases, to increase taxes, the older homes will disappear eventually, and the new homes will come, and this will be one of the showplaces of the city. I built a couple of houses along that street and prior to the Great Depression, people were asking me every day, is there more places available? Can we do this? So, there's great opportunity here for the city. One suggestion I have to make, which is off the subject, is the Norah Lake Building should be turned into a parking lot, and our park increased in size to the Norah Lake Building, because we need parking down there. The home that I bought was an existing home, and I understand it had a dock for more than forty years, so, thank you.
Okay.
Hi, my name is Sarah Atkins and I live at nine twenty-five First Street, but before I speak on my own behalf, I have a letter written by Bruce Mestamacher, who lives at ten fifteen First Street, who isn't able to be with us tonight, and he would like me to read it for you. "City Council, I'm sorry to hear, I'm sorry that I cannot be there tonight. Before we purchased our home at ten fifteen First Street in Hudson in two thousand, we talked to Dan Regland. He was in the City of Hudson's main office. It was regarding docks and he stated that we were grandfathered in. It was not in writing and that was how the city was operating. This added value to the price that we paid for our house at that time. We replaced the original dock in two thousand two and I again met with the city official, Dan Regland, to go over the plans for the dock that was being built by St. Croix Marina for us. Again, Dan said, no problem, you've met all the requirements and both he and the city would be okay with it. To remove the docks changes the value of all these properties and goes against what we have been told and what we have been operating under in these past years, which is that having a dock would not be a problem." That's from Bruce and Joy Mestamacher, and I can turn that into if you want. On my own behalf, I've been a property owner on First Street since two thousand four. There was a dock included in the sale price of the home and we had no reason to believe that there were any compliance issues whatsoever, as there had been a dock at that property for as long as anyone around could remember. We did not know the age of the dock at the time, but we were told it had been previously owned by one of the local marinas and when they upgraded to new docks, the property owner at our place acquired it. But it became a problem dock and in that, the styro, not styrofoam, but the foam used to float it was degrading and polluting in the river, and so my husband and I took it upon ourselves to replace that dock at great expense in two thousand nine. So, if there had been any reason to believe that in the future docks were not going to be allowed, that would have not been our choice, we would have not replaced that dock, and it was, these things are not cheap. Additionally, since we had not been told that there was going to be any issue, even a controversy over this, you probably all know that my husband and I recently invested in quite a large improvement in our building by adding an attached garage, and that would have never been, we would have never, ever chosen to put money into the, to that house had there not been the, the assumption that we have a dock, we can have a boat, and we can get on the water. So, I think any decision to discontinue allowing the adjacent property owners from having a dock is going to greatly impact the value of all of these properties, and I just can't see how any city council could possibly vote to do something that would so negatively impact the property values for the residents."
Thank you, Sarah. Anyone else?
Good evening, my name is Stephen Lund, I'm representing the Mestamachers. I'm an agent with Edina Realty out of the Stillwater office, and I appreciate Sarah's comments. Mrs. Mestamacher unfortunately couldn't be here, nor could Bruce. I'm speaking on behalf of just the, the real estate aspect of what's going on right now. I've had the property listed for about, just short of three weeks, and we've had a lot of activity and interest, but the interest lies in the fact that knowing that there isn't legal riparian rights, but I was under the assumption from the Mestamachers and supported by what I've been hearing from Sarah and Mr. Fletcher, I'm kind of hogtied right now. I'm speaking directly on the impact that this is going to have on the Mestamachers' ability to get market, marketable rights or ability to sell this house, because it's very clear that the potential buyer, and I'm getting this from potential buyers, is their ability to be able to dock the boat. The Mestamachers at great expense, because of their last twenty years of history, spent a great deal of money on that sixty-six foot dock, which will be transferred with the, the property, and I'm marketing it as such, but I'm very clear with potential buyers that there has to be some sort of clear-cut arrangement, that they are not getting deeded rights, but to a person, I've been told by potential buyers, and I've lost two potential sales because of the nebulous situation that is occurring here. So, I, I think it's a great idea that we're having this discussion, so there can be some clear-cut guidelines, and I would add that there's potentially a fourth option that, that I didn't hear. Correct me if I'm wrong, the third option was to, the city to allow non-reparian owners in general, somebody from Third Street wanting to put a dock down, I would submit that there perhaps should be a fourth, and that would be to extend by permit a grandfathering in on the existing dock owners that have direct access to that, and not just let this, you know, happen to be a, a crowd of docks from anybody that wants to put a dock in on public property. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, is there anyone else that would like to speak to this issue?
Jim Drake, four twenty-three River Street, I don't have a vote on First Street. I guess, you know, with all due respect to the folks on First Street, they realize there's lots of financial issues, there's kind of word-of-mouth grandfathering that's been supposedly conveyed by the city, but it's my understanding that Tom sent out a survey, I think in January, asking folks for any formal documentation as to whether or not they had any ability or any right to put a private structure on public land, and I believe nobody was able to provide anything in writing. So, you know, I guess my question would, or my question for the city council would be, is you have an ordinance that says that no private structures, docks or otherwise, are allowed on city property. So, you know, why have an ordinance if you're not going to enforce it or if you're only going to enforce it selectively?
Thanks. Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening, my name is Tom Irwin, I live, I don't live on First Street anymore, but I moved there in nineteen eighty-nine, and I moved into eleven thirteen First Street that same year I bought the adjacent home, so I, I still own eleven oh seven, eleven thirteen First Street. Ever since that time, I use the river, put docks out. Since I moved away and they've been rental homes, it's been some years there are, some years there aren't, depending on, on who wants to take care of it and who wants to expend the energy. So, since nineteen eighty-nine, we've been using it that way, and I just wanted to say it's a diddle from Mr. Kleckert's comments, that's the exact understanding I've had, and I've contacted the city several times and got that same response. I know it's a difficult situation that you're dealing with here, but I would really like to hear from some folks like maybe the former building inspector, Mike Wallace, his, he grew up on that street, he's probably was working for the city at the time that the actual transaction took place from the railroad, and he might be able to shed a little more light on it, and maybe there's others that can. I know Randy Morset is waiting to speak and he may too, but, so it's been a long time that we've been operating this way, and I also respect the, the individual here that feels like, well, we, we shouldn't be able to use that right, but, but I think that if you do move toward the option of allowing a continuation, I would agree that it should be the people who have the properties there and not a free-for-all, because we already, one thing I noticed when the, when the walking paths went in, while I still live there, is pretty soon my property became the public's property. People decided to park on First Street wherever they find space, and they walk through your property to get to the path, they're walking up the path, I've got a nice, kind of a nice graded slope, you don't have a dip and a steep hill, and people just walk up through there like it's their own property. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
Randy Morset, two thirty-three Seventh Street South. A little history that I'm aware of when I was growing up down there. Ownership was never explained very well to the First Street residents when the city decided to buy the old Chicago Northwestern Transportation Railline property. The city was the goal, to be the go-between if the residents were interested in buying their representative lots respective to their property, using the city as a broker at the time. That transparency never took place, and neither did any of the sales except for one, and that was to the City of Hudson and the Parks Department. The residents along First Street at the time were sold a bill of goods that was never realized. In the support of the residents along First Street, in which I'll call the Hudson Bay out there from north of the Dyke to the railroad, I believe that a permitted use can be worked out, very similar to that of the mooring fees, mooring fees applied now for the sailboat south of the Dyke Road. A yearly agreement or however long fee for the adjacent properties only is an effective way to, for the way the city can control and maintain control down there. There's no difference in my mind that these docks are the same as the mooring of boats for a yearly fee like the south side of the dock. In fairness to the people who pay considerably more taxes on First Street because of the St. Croix River and having property on the river, it's a benefit that they have to pay for, and they do pay for it, and not just monetarily. I mean, there's garbage, there's, there's feces from animals, there's noise, there's just a lot of things that those residents put up with down there. If someone in the city wants the opportunity to have a dock in that Hudson Bay down there or lakefront park area, then it would be their cause to go find the property available, purchase it and put a dock out, and go through the same process that hopefully this city council can come up with. Under Wisconsin statute NR one eighteen oh five, under land uses and structures in the lower St. Croix River District two, two B, under Rivertown Management Zone, the city has a discretion of what structures can be permitted, provided it meets the municipal's owning requirements. And under that City Hudson permitted structures, R one zone. And under that City Hudson permitted structures, R one zoning, docks do qualify. So again, I request that this issue go back either to Public Works and/or Finance Committee to have a legally binding permitted agreement drawn up that meets all the codes and ordinance requirements. The city can work with residents on a mature, reasonable policy, much like the mooring agreements that are and have been in place for many years in the City of Hudson. Thanks.
Thank you, Randy. Two fifty-five, you did a good job. Anyone else? Okay. And you get your three minutes too, Hugh, no more.
Yeah. That's tough for a lawyer.
I know, that's. Now you've already used, uh, ten seconds, you better get going.
Uh, Hugh H. Gwynn with, uh, Eckberg Lammers, Briggs, Wolf, and Veriling, and you're in Hudson. Uh, I was raised in the city about, uh, two blocks from, uh, the area where these docks are in question. Uh, I used to play down there and fish down there as a kid. A lot of people had docks down there, and, uh, some of them were pretty long, uh, because the, of the, uh, river fluctuating. Um, I, I think the, there's a, a number of points here, but basically, I think it's a fairness issue, uh, to the residents there. Um, docks have been there for literally generations. Um, the city has been, um, compliant, and, uh, I would go so far as to say permissive of, uh, people having docks there. Uh, and, um, I was involved in the, uh, late seventies when the issue of the sailboat moorings came up. Um, myself and a number of people had legal, uh, Army Corps of Engineer permits to have moorings there. Um, we had gone through the, uh, application process, uh, and the city and, and the DNR and the, uh, Army Corps, after public hearings that were held, uh, came to an agreement on a policy and a procedure, uh, to allow those moorings to, uh, be utilized and to be available to the public. Uh, but, uh, the Army Corps insisted that those of us who had, uh, uh, permits there already and had our moorings in, uh, were grandfathered in as part of that process. Um, and I think what, uh, Randy has indicated is, is, uh, would be good for the city, for the relationship with the homeowners. Uh, I suspect if, uh, the, uh, nuclear option is taken, you're probably going to see, uh, everybody on First Street coming in and appealing their, uh, tax valuation. Um, you're not going to see development along there. Uh, you're not going to have, as, as Dean Hanson did, buy an older home, uh, tear it down and, and build a new home, uh, along there.
Ten seconds.
And there are advantages to the city. There, I think there are some other legal issues as far as riparian rights, uh, the railroad right-of-way, what, uh, the railroad had when it originally...
You could wrap up, you, I'd appreciate it.
Okay. Um, I would recommend that this is much more complicated legally than, um, uh, could just be done in a meeting tonight, and would ask that it go back to committee for some diligent study and, uh, research. Uh, there are, I think, workable options that, uh, should be able to satisfy the public as well as the, uh, owners, uh, of the land along that area. Thank you.
Is there anyone else? Yes.
Hi, I'm Shirley Droh. I live at twelve eighteen Third Street.
Could you?
Shirley Droh, twelve eighteen...
Put up the microphone a little bit. There you go.
Shirley Droh, twelve eighteen Third Street.
Thank you.
I guess I wanna just remind the council that it is public park. I don't have a vested interest in it, although it is my space as a citizen of Hudson as well. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. I think, uh, we're done with the public part of it. Uh, council, what's your, uh, preference?
Well, I have, I have one question, and Danny, maybe you could answer it, or I see Liz is here. Um, just regarding the tax valuation question, do you think in any of these instances docks were actually calculated into the value of the home? And if you can't answer it, I, it's fine.
I can't answer. I have a question.
Okay.
Well, I got a, I got a mouthful, maybe. I don't know. Um, I would like this to go back to committee. I'd like it to be, whether it's Finance or Public Works, I'd like it, I would like to see it get worked out so that we don't have to remove the docks. I don't, not a big fan of just grandfathering just those docks, 'cause then the argument of valuation with the docks for the rest of the homeowners makes no sense to me, but, um, I think there's something to be worked out. I like Mr. Randy Morissette's idea with, uh, mooring fees. Um, I think that would be fair. If they're gonna have docks down there, you know, there should be a fee paid, just like everybody else who, I mean, there's fifty, fifty mooring, fifty places to moor your sailboat, and those are hot commodity, there's a waiting list for them, so it's not like this is something that's, you know, we don't have to remake the wheel here, is my point. Um, I think it's important to try and make this a win-win for everyone. I, I agree, many of these people probably bought their homes based on the fact that they thought they could have a dock there, or an existing dock was there, and there is a long history, and I'm not in the mood to just take that away. So, I'd like to see something worked out in committee where it can be...
Well, I, I don't wanna speak if either of you have something to say, but, 'cause I've already...
No, go ahead.
You know, the issue of the docks versus the moorings, I don't see that those are really equivalent. We're talking about privately-owned docks, and the moorings are not privately-owned, they're, they're leased. People have a right to them as long as they send their application in, um, they don't have any bearing on where those individuals live. A lot of those people don't even live in the city who rent the moorings. And so we're talking about that situation versus docks that are privately-owned, and, you know, permitting specific users to them. I just, I see them as completely different issues. As far as, you know, the home values and, I mean, that's why it was specifically asked, is there anything in the deed that specifies that, you know, the dock comes with a property, that you have rights to that land? Um, you know, the whole notion of the grandfathering that, and Catherine, I guess I'd like you to speak to this too. You know, I feel like at some point down the road, someone in the city didn't address this issue when it should've been addressed, when the land was transferred. I mean, that's my assessment of it, it's fairly simplistic, but should've been addressed at some point. And so do we now, because it wasn't addressed, are we somehow bound by that?
Well, I don't, I haven't looked at the records in terms of what the files say on transfer of the property, whether there were any obligations on the part of the city. I just don't know the answer to that. I don't think, if there isn't some sort of documentation on that, I don't think the city has any obligations. So I just don't know, I think it's worth looking at. Um, this ordinance, uh, the other thing to look at is, this ordinance has been on the books for some time, I don't know exactly when that was adopted, but it says specifically that even with permission, that, um, the dock can be removed within, that city can notify them that they have to remove it within ten days. So, again, I wasn't city attorney at that time, but it seemed to me that tells me that it was not intended and certainly couldn't be taken and relied upon any sort of authorization or permit. But again, I think it's worth looking at the files, at the history, to see just what kinda document, what does the documentation say? Was, did the city have an obligation or not? Once you do that, you get more facts, but it doesn't change the situation we have now in that the city is owner of the property, and any docks installed are in violation of the ordinance without some sort of permission given. So, and there has been no document, they were asked whether there was any permission, and there was none. Um, I don't think reliance on a city official's oral statements that they're grandfathered in is binding on the city. I mean, this is a, they're purchasing valuable property, and it behooves them honestly to say, to look at that property and see what they're purchasing when they buy it. Um, I heard the word assumption a lot tonight, and I'm not trying to minimize what people, I mean, people do that, but again, it, that doesn't convey property rights. So, I think the city needs to look at what the history is, what the, when this ordinance was adopted, what the purpose was, but at the end of the day, it needs to decide what kind of policy it wants to have. The fact is, this is public property, and any policy it comes up with affects not just that situation, or has the potential of affecting not just that situation, but we're talking public park property. And you just, that's why I think it's, it needs to be referred back to committee, because all the implications of any kind of action on this need to be thought through, because it's, it's quite a thing to allow private use of public property.
And if I can just elaborate maybe on what I was saying, I wasn't suggesting that mo, what you're, I agree with you on the mooring thing, I wasn't suggesting that they're one in the same, I was suggesting that, same, same with your saying, we would have to give permission. I mean, this would have to be a very well-thought-out, written-out type of permit for adjacent property owner, owners to give permission to, in my opinion, adjacent property owners to use public land. I understand that. My, my reference to the mooring would be that there should be some, with this permission should come payment, that was my reference to the mooring, is that was towards payment, towards using this. Granted that they're maintaining a private dock, and that takes costs, but again, it's on public land, so, you know, I think that, I'm just, really would like to see this go back to committee, to consider working out a very well-thought-out type of permit that can meet the needs of both the adjacent property owners and the city.
Okay. Rich?
I, I, um, I have some concerns about discrimination in a permit-type situation where other residents of the City of Hudson do not have the same rights for permitting, uh, and limiting it to just the adjacent property owners. I, I, I believe that, to me, that is somewhat discriminatory if you're talking about the entire City of Hudson, and, and that would concern me if we went in that direction. I think we need to get in compliance with this ordinance, if we're gonna have it on the books, we need to come into compliance, and, um, I also have some, uh, empathy for the homeowners who have put these docks in and were unaware of whatever the situation was, whatever the ordinance was, and I would like to suggest that if we do send it back to committee, and I'm all in favor of that also, that we have an end date where the docks will end at some point in time, whether that end date might be on the sale of the house, the dock comes out and does not go back in, or whether we make an end date of two or three years from now and allow permitting for a two or three-year period of time, and then they come out. But I think anything we do, there should be an end date to this.
Okay. Kurt?
Well, I'd like to see it go back to committee, definitely, and like Rich, I, I just see a real issue with selecting a few groups, or a group that is eligible for a permit, you know, within one street. Um, it, it is the public's, everyone in Hudson's parkland, and further, I guess, is how far south does, does that work? You know, how do we say this permit is behind this house, or west of, I should say? And, you know, it might get all the way down behind Nor Lake, and people say, oh, I'd like a permit for down there. So I, I think ultimately it needs to go to committee, and just get every, all the ducks in a row, I guess.
Did you say all the ducks or all the docks?
All the docks in a row.
No pun intended.
Okay.
So, does anybody have the committee that should go back to? Does it wanna go back to Public Works, or do we wanna go to Finance, or do we wanna go, where do you wanna go?
Well, Rich wants us to go back to Public Works, because he's no longer on it.
Welcome to public safety.
Yeah.
No, we can, but I really, I mean, I guess I'm, I'm, I'm getting some sense of, of where people are at, but we can flesh out some of these facts and some of the history. Um, I mean, Liz, I think you looked at, to a large degree, at the files that we have, and if there was some written agreement, it wasn't...
Yeah, it wasn't written down in any of the memos, so my guess, knowing Liz, it probably doesn't exist, at least in our files, but we certainly should look. She's very detail-oriented.
Okay. So what do we wanna do? Is there, is there a motion, a Senate-backed committee, or a specific committee? Or do you wanna...
Let me, I just, I have a question.
The only reason, the only, I mean, the only reason I would, I would, um, I think Public Works would be a good committee, but then we have, you know, a, a member of that committee who would have to, or maybe it would be good to have a member on the committee who has a personal interest in it, I don't know.
Well, he would, he'd have to recuse himself.
If he has to recuse himself.
But he would unfinance it.
He'd finance too, so he takes it up safety.
Yeah, so you, you know, you've got a situation where one person's gonna have to recuse himself, you've only got two people working on it, so...
But all we would do is bring back a recommendation.
Yeah, oh yeah, it's a, it's a decision for the council.
It's not like we're gonna make any final decision.
Right.
Catherine, do you see any avenue where we could, we could pursue a permitting process, um, that would preferentially give permits to adjacent property owners? See, that's what I thought.
It's a difficulty. I'm not saying it can't be done. Um, I think the mooring is a little bit different in that it sounds to me, and again, I'm basing this solely on what Mr. Gwynn said, is the people who were grandfathered had permits, they had gone through a process to get a permit. I don't think that's happened in this case.
Well, I, you know...
I just think it's gonna have to be, I think that any kind of referral back to committee should be to just explore all the options and to, you know, get all the facts and to come back with a recommendation.
Okay, that was just a legal question I had, just to help us with some direction.
I can't say just right now without knowing more, whether it would be inappropriate or impossible for, basically what you're asking is, can the city allow just certain people to use public property?
Yeah.
I think you'd wanna have a basis for that, maybe there would be something in the files, I don't know.
We do it with the city, um, with the, uh, Afton Cruise Line right now. We allow just them to run that dock. We have a contract with them.
That's a little bit different in that they're providing, uh, kind of a, I mean, I'm just pointing out a difference, a tourist service to anyone who wants to come and ride on their boat. This is a little bit different...
More profit.
Yeah, correct, but also drawing people to the city. You could say there's a public interest in that. And that's what the city really needs to be thinking about in, um, use of its parkland, unless there's something in the files that would show something different.
Is there a motion, the Senate backed committee?
I'll make a motion to send it back to Public Works.
Second.
Okay.
I'm open to hearing more discussion if there is, because, you know...
I had a question about city-owned land, I guess, and it's not necessarily parkland, but, so...
We have a motion and a second. Did we have a second?
Yeah, I seconded it.
Okay, okay. Go ahead.
Okay, so, it's not necessarily parkland, but there is city-owned land around the city, I mean, obviously, that's not being used, that's adjacent to property owners' homes all around the city. You know, I think the question here with this, with the riverway is that it's valuable piece of land, it's, this is valuable, people, you know, it's, the trail's walking through it, but there's something to be said too, where you have land and, land that may be adjacent to your backyard inside the city, people are using, people use it, people will just kind of extend their backyards into city lots.
But they have no basis for building on it.
Nope, you're right.
If you put something on there and the city learned of it, the city would, I would think, take, tell them to take it down. They have no basis for saying, I'm putting this here and I'm the only one who can use it.
Right.
Which is how it would be with the dock.
Right, unless the city gave permission for, for, for the dock.
Correct, but you're saying other people use the land, but they don't exclude, you may use vacant land near you, but you're not excluding others, and you're not... And you're not saying, this is mine and only I can use it.
Right.
That's a big difference.
Well, as if you live next to a park and you put a private jungle gym, that wouldn't apply, so.
I get that, that's kind of not where I was getting at, but I'll leave it alone. Maybe I shouldn't have brought it up.
Well, Lori, you wanted more discussion.
Well, just if there was, you know, I just wanted to hear from people who aren't on Public Works anymore.
I personally would like to see it back at Finance, but, because we have two people versus three that would be able to vote on it at Finance.
That's true.
But we have a motion on the table.
We have two people at Public Works who can vote on it.
Two out of, yeah, we have three on Finance.
I'll re-assume my second if you want to.
Yeah, I can amend, I'll amend that.
No, I'm not, I'm just, I'm just saying.
No, it makes sense, there's more, more voices there.
I think that's a valid point. I didn't think of the fact that we have three on Finance and only two on Public Works.
Yeah, I'll re-assume my second.
Probably be better, so, I, you know, I'll amend my motion to say, let's send it back to the Finance Committee.
I'll second that. See how easy that was.
It doesn't seem like an appropriate committee to look at it, in all honesty.
Okay.
I just.
I would agree.
Well, I mean, the pro, this has all come up through parks and Public Works issues and, I mean.
I think you'll want input from the park and Public Works staff on difficulties with whatever kind of policy you're looking at.
Okay, Finance Committee consists of two members of Public Works. It used to be all three members of Public Works were on the Finance Committee. So, to me, it's the same people who are going to be chatting about it essentially with an added person from Public Safety, which might be nice. And, you know, I think it might be more in an appropriate place since the members are almost the same. It's, either way, it's going to go back through Finance at some point. So, I guess, you know, if, if a lot of the bulk of the information is sitting with Public Works already and you chair Public Works, you can bring it to Finance.
But it won't go back to Finance necessarily. If it's a Public Works issue and we bring a recommendation forward to full council, because there's not, right?
There's really not another committee that was there.
It wouldn't be a miniature funds.
Right, so, I mean, it wouldn't necessarily go back to Public Works. I'm just saying the history is that in Public Works, that Tom brought it forward. I mean, we can do it in Finance, but it just seems like a disconnect to me.
Are you, are you suggesting or moving towards an ad hoc committee? Something that's not even for?
You know, there's some further study and investigation, sounds like needs to go on, and I just.
I don't know that it, I mean, personal opinion that it needs an ad hoc committee. I mean, you have a committee, a Public Works committee set up to deal, in parks, to deal with these types of things. I'm, yeah, I, I'm, that's up to you folks. But I, just another separate committee that needs to be noticed and people need to keep track of, to me.
Can I just say though, I don't know how long this is going to take? I mean, it could be a month, it could be more than a month. And I think we need to have some recognition of that and decision as to what people are being asked to do with their docks or not, or, I'm just.
Okay.
Do we have the right to allow whatever existing docks are in the water to stay there right now until we further review and figure out what we're going to do? I mean, people put their docks in the water already, are we going to? I, I'm not a boulder. I don't know what it takes to put a dock in the water, but I know what it takes to expend your time to do it. So, I'm just wondering if we can at least say for those that already have their docks in the water for the year, let's, until we can figure out what we're going to do.
Well, we haven't done anything for twenty years.
Yeah, I think that's fine.
I know, but if, if everyone's worried about the fact that we're already breaking policy, or I'm just trying to, I don't care if they all, obviously, I've made it very clear that I think they could all put them in. But my point is that if we're worried about the fact that we're already currently breaking policy, I'm just suggesting that maybe we just ask the residents to be patient till we figure this out, you know? And maybe that's too much to ask, but.
Well, we have a motion on the floor and a second.
We, it was amended to Finance, so, yeah, it's amended to Finance.
Correct, isn't that what we have on the floor?
Yeah.
Is there any other discussion that we need to have?
Are you still want to go to Finance with it?
I, I, I do only because the points of having Public Works represented by Lori on it, also having three people instead of two people at a committee, I think it would probably get a better discussion.
Okay. Who's the third?
Me.
Who's the third, the other one on Public Works?
Kurt and Randy.
Kurt, okay. I didn't know if it was John, because that wouldn't do anything.
Yeah, that wouldn't do anything.
Okay, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
I'll vote yes, so we'll go to Finance. Thank you. All right, item D, Public Safety Committee. And I think we need to, did I miss something?
No, you're good.
Okay. If we go to the Public Safety Minutes, get everybody back in here.
Everything was on consent.
No, this was pulled off, item D was pulled off. And again, I want to look at this, and it says on the agenda that it's request to restrict parking on Hanley Road between Carmichael and Amacoggin. It is, if you go to the minutes of the Public Works or Public Safety meeting, it's between Carmichael Road and Amacoggin, is that correct?
No, Foxglove Way and Amacoggin is what the committee recommendation was.
Okay. Kurt, you pull this, what do you, what can we do?
Well, reading through everything and including the accident report that Marty asked that be pulled for this meeting, you know, I, I don't see, I don't know. I've driven through it myself and I, I don't see where it's a huge problem. And I fear micromanaging two blocks at a time around the city. Well, no, I, I understand that. And, and every issue comes from a complaint, I understand that. But, you know, for all we know, it's somebody that is going to live in one of those apartments for the next three months. And we're going to put an ordinance on the books that's there forever, or potentially forever. And, I mean, I, I've driven through in the past, a few times in the past few days, there's no trucks there. So, you know, granted, it's tough to judge when there's no trucks there. But that, that's just my, my opinion is the micromanaging of two blocks at a time. And maybe I'm going to learn something real quickly, but.
Well, uh.
Well, I think Lee, New Island, had seen and there had frequently been a large white boat that was causing some of the traffic disturbance and it was seasonal. And so, he kind of, originally we looked at, there's kind of only two spots or two blocks there that has residents specifically. And really only the big trailer-like vehicles were causing any kind of that issue. So, we only were looking at a restriction of big vehicles, because everything else, we didn't want to limit the people, the residents there. And then also there was, had been these continued complaints about trash removal that there, people kept parking in front, nobody could put their garbage cans out. So, we're just trying to hit two birds with one stone there, so that was.
Cars parking in front or semis parking in front?
Uh, in that particular case, it's cars, but.
I mean, this is a, this is a truck and trailer.
Sure.
Can I explain? So, essentially, here's the deal. We had, from Foxglove Way to, to Namicane, no semi and trailer parking, because there has been issues with semis. I agree with you wholeheartedly, there's no issues when there's cars there. Which is why at first, we were going to shoot down the idea, is we discussed it more. There has been, there are issues with semis and there are issues with trailer parking, not just the one boat. We did decide at Safety that that one boat issue can be handled outside of it.
There must be an ordinance about a parked boat already.
No, there's not. So, and as far as, so that's why we're, we're looking at trailers and semis, because it is causing a problem with crossing the center line. As far as the, the garbage situation, there were many complaints about their garbage not being picked up because of cars being parked in, in front of that. It was, it's a two hundred to maybe three hundred foot spot where it's being no parking whatsoever, not even cars, because of the garbage situation. So, not, the whole stretch of road is not going to be no parking. The whole stretch of, that whole stretch of road will be no parking for trailers and semis. Two hundred feet is going to be for cars only, or, or for nothing. Nothing is allowed to park. Because it does become a nuisance if your garbage doesn't get picked up. We have an issue then. So, that's why we decided to move forward and make it a little more specific when it came to cars versus semis and trailers on that street.
So, there's no driveways that someone could put their garbage cans out? Somebody parks in front of their driveways?
We, they were, they're already moving their garbage cans to try and accommodate the cars that are parked there.
Well, the.
They've been moving their garbage cans and it's just still continuing to be troublesome.
I think the issue, other issue was that Viola can't get into that lot to pick up the cans. It's too narrow for them, I think was the deal. So, there, there's no way for them to get their garbage.
Okay.
We, we tried many options before we went to this option.
All right, so, is there a motion?
I would like to move to approve the recommendation of the Public Safety Committee.
Okay. Is there a second?
A second.
Is there any other discussion? Kurt, was it?
I'm just curious, I mean, can you, Marty, just address the issue of semi parking on city streets in general? Boat parking on city streets in general, please?
Well, the boat parking, the only regulation we have on that, obviously, other than the new ordinance with empty boat trailers, would be that you can't park your trailer with a boat on it any longer than 24 hours, just like any vehicle and so forth. Semi trailers, I'd have to take a look at the ordinance again, but I do believe that you can park in a residential area, but it's only certain hours of the day. You can't park there from 10 o'clock at night to 6 o'clock in the morning outside an industrial area, if I believe that's how the ordinance reads. So, we, we have had a problem with somebody that had a semi tractor trailer parking at those apartments during the day and at night, however, it was gone. So, I think that's why one of, some of this issue has been brought forward.
Any other discussion? Lori, you look like you have a question.
Well, I'm just wondering, is that street any narrower than any other city street? Just in regard to the semi parking?
Thirty-three, more than likely at thirty-six, but Kurt, Kurt.
There's, there's parking allowed on the other side of the street too, though. So, when you have a car parked on one side of the street and a semi parked on the other side of the street, granted, I agree with Kurt, the accidents were not there.
That doesn't, it, it, the report just doesn't scream out danger.
Right, right, it doesn't, but that's why we kept it from Foxglove to, to, that's why we shortened the distance too. We, we looked at it more specifically as to where, you know, the street curves, which is, you know? So, we, we looked at it pretty specifically, which is why we narrowed the recommendation.
Well, in the history here, I mean, it talks about you driving the, the stretch.
Well, I drive it every day.
Well, I know, but, I mean, I, I just feel like I agree with part of what it says you feel is unfair to the residents and their guests to restrict parking in the area.
That's why we didn't restrict car parking.
I know, but the truck driver is a resident, no doubt.
If a vehicle is too big where it causes problems for other vehicles driving, we need to look at, he's, another location for him to park his truck, that would be, you, you can't, it, it just wouldn't be, it's just, we don't need to have that danger, you know, on the street. I've, I've crossed the center line with, with big trucks out there before. If you have two cars coming, I've actually stalled. But I don't agree with restricting cars, which is why the 200-foot thing came into play with the garbage can.
Okay. Any other discussion? I don't want to cut it off, but, okay, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries. Draft agreement, the lease approximately 30 acres of St. Croix County Government Center property for the non-motorized passive recreation trails general area west of the county government center facilities and north of the YMCA. Mr. Darnold?
I did visit St. Croix County Representatives last week, just to clarify the issue of they would consider reducing the lease rate to $1 per year. They returned with a lease rate of $2,000 per year as previously $4,000. The issue of where bicycles could use the trails, they do not have a concern. What they, what their concern was in regards to bicycles is that the area, if the city does lease, that it's not used for competitive bicycling events. So, essentially, the lease is the same as it was presented about a month ago, except the lease rate has been reduced from $4,000 a year to $2,000 a year. There was some discussion on this issue of, of the city dams and the county paying $4,000 a year, at least on an approximate average, help maintain that. My discussion with the county was, they didn't think the two issues were connected. The county is a partial owner of the dam anyway, so, from that perspective, I, I really didn't agree with that, trying to connect those two issues. Didn't hold a gun to their head, basically, you know, if you want to submit a lease back to us, you know, we certainly consider it. And the lease that was submitted from the county staff to, for the city consideration was for $2,000 per year, which the 2012 rate would be $1,167. I did not discuss this with the county, but one of the perspectives I would least ask the city to give consideration to, one of my issues from the very beginning was parking. If the, even the city got this for a dollar per year, where would parking occur? And the county has agreed to allow us to use their parking at their expense of maintenance and so forth. Otherwise, you're, people are going to park at the YMCA, they're going to park on Grandview where, you know, if you think you got complaints, wait till they start parking on Grandview to use that area, where the county has agreed to allow parking on the south side of the, basically the jail area, to allow residents or users of this potential park area. So, I, that's the only thing I, you know, as far as justifying a $2,000 a year lease, that might be the consideration.
Let me talk this out loud for people at home too. So, the county wants to charge the city. The city funds the residents, already pay county taxes, bought the land up there, bought all that. And now they're asking us to charge our residents again to use that land that they already once paid for. Did, am I thinking that out loud right?
If you want to look at it from that perspective, it's their land, they own it. I mean, they don't have to offer us to lease. I guess you want to look at it from that perspective. I discussed that perspective with them. They came back with a $2,000 request for a lease. I mean, you have, you can simply say, no, we're not interested in that, send it back to them, whether they want to resend it back to the city or not. But it was, you know, I, I discussed the issue of $1 per year and the very issues that you're talking about, Randy.
Now, we have some other opportunities at, at that particular location, if, if you're so interested in, whether it's the disc golf or whether we have a dog park there. And again, I, I think that would be considered passive use, at least based on what I see here. I know we've had people request dog park for, I don't know how many times, they've been, they've come to us and we've turned them down at various locations. And disc golf, a location for the disc golf that we've been talking about. So, that was a possibility that I looked at when we were talking about this. Now, whether or not you folks want to pay for that, that's your choice.
You know, they, they're squeezing us on this library thing for more money. And I don't care what anybody says, I'll point a finger at them. And now they want us to pay more money for this use, if it was an option.
It was a joint thing. I don't think they came to us and said, we want you to take this land from us or lease it. We had talked to them about it too, it was a joint.
There's, there's a two-party discussion, the county and the city, and, and basically the city's expression one, yes, we are interested.
Yep.
My comments were at the very first beginning, if the price is right, the city may want to do it.
Yep.
If the price $2,000 a year isn't the right price, then the answer is no.
Right. I don't think they're pressuring us to pay, pay the money, is what I'm trying to get to. There is no pressure on their part to say, here, you've got to take this.
Well, I kind of feel like they're trying to pressure us. I mean, basically, we're going to pay, they're asking us to pay $2,000 to remove no trespassing signs. That's how I see it. We've had our residents walk back there every day for I don't know how many years. They are, I perceive it to be, they're respectful of the land back there. We've had garbage cans out there that we maintain, correct, Tom? We maintain, we.
Someone on the walking trail.
Yep, someone on a walking trail. We have done some light brush work if necessary, if I recall. You know, there, our police are already charged with policing it. I feel like we're going to pay $2,000 to do what we already do. And I'm not comfortable with that at all, and I do. And I'm not comfortable with that at all and I do, and I appreciate all the work you're doing, Danny, on this. It's just that I do feel like we're double taxing. I don't like it. I think that, um, I think that if there's political issues involved with other communities, that's not my problem. So, I would, I'd, I don't think we should pay a penny to do what we're already doing, so.
Okay.
Can I ask another question about the two-party? I appreciate what you do, obviously, Danny, but is, did this come out of necessity to try and figure out where to put a dog park and a frisbee park? Is that where this is come, came from, with the two-party talk?
And I, and I also think the, uh, opportunity of the city residents to utilize the land was a, 'cause there's no trespassing signs.
Since they were already using it?
Yes, but not legally.
Well, that just came up though, right, no trespassing signs.
Within the last six months?
Yeah.
They were just installed.
They just installed them six months ago.
I was gonna say, I've been going there.
Well, it's public land.
You'd be ticketed on your way out.
But it has no trespassing signs on it.
They own it.
You know, there's another way of looking at it. It's been open to anyone to use. Any county resident, I mean, until the no trespassing signs went up. The other way to look at it is, it will continue to be available to all county residents, not just City of Hudson residents, but we're gonna be taking care of it. We're gonna be maintaining the trails. And, gosh, to me, that does seem like a reasonable trade-off. We're, yeah, it's within the city limits, so probably more city residents will go there, but it's still open to everyone in the county. We're just offering to do some maintenance.
Gosh, I just feel like we're always flipping the bill. I'm tired of flipping the bill, we have, I agree with Randy, we have, we got other, other areas in the city right now where I, two thousand dollars can be spent, if we need to spend it, like the library, like, like our roads, like the police. I mean, there's just so many different areas right now and to flip the bill for something that we've already been doing. Again, those people, the people who are outside of the city, still can, still could have, they could have used it six months ago. You know, and we were, like I said, we, we plow the eas, we have an easement, so we're the ones plowing that road, that easement already. We're the ones clearing the garbage. We're gonna pay two thousand dollars to remove no trespassing signs. I don't like it.
Okay, anyone else?
Can't the county make a county park?
That's up to them.
It's up to the county, yes.
Yep, it's their land, they can do what they want with it.
There's something else to consider, we enter into an agreement, which I understand that we could, this agreement says we could leave it at any time. This is also part of the parcel of land that was offered to the school, the sixty-two and a half acres. I thought that was an extra parcel of land, I was apparently mistaken. So, I don't wanna enter some agreement and then possibly have to start maintaining it and then possibly pull out of that agreement if, depending on which way the school route goes. You know, we don't know which way, any, any, we have a lot of unknowns in our future, so.
On that, to that question, I did discuss that possibility with the county. I think both parties realize if, uh, eventual discussions, conversations in regards to the school possibly using that property, both the city and the county are gonna come to a mutual agreement on, on that consideration. That's, I mean, that's about as much of a no-grainer as anything, so if it gets to that point.
Could offer him less money.
We offered him a dollar.
Could offer more than a dollar. Two dollars.
I think we need to make a decision, yea or nay tonight on two thousand dollars. It's either yes or no, and then let's move on. I mean, we can argue, and then it's a thousand dollars, then it's five hundred. I think they came back, they wanted five, went to four, and now it's down to two and I think that's where it's gonna be, yes or no, and then let's move on. That's my recommendation, is make a decision and let's move on.
I'll make a most to deny, paying two thousand dollars.
Is there a second?
I'll suck it.
Is there any other discussion?
The only thing I would like to add is that we offer them one more time that we will maintain it and it's open to all residents. Can't we not do that?
Well, that's, that's part of the agreement. The city maintains the property.
But we're just.
And paying two thousand dollars.
Yeah, but I'm just saying, the offer still stands, that we would be willing to maintain the trails, but.
Oh, you mean?
But aren't interested in paying.
Oh, 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 okay, I see what you're saying.
Right.
Yeah, but I'm saying, we would still be willing to do that, make it open to everyone, we just.
But still deny the purchase price?
We don't wanna be charged two thousand dollars.
I'll add that to my motion.
You already went back to him, though, with that?
Yeah, he already, he already did it.
I think Lori's, Lori's trying to make the distinction that it would remain county property, but the city would maintain the trails. Am I correct in your, interpreting your comment?
Why don't you just have two separate motions?
Okay.
Decide whether you wanna go with the lease or not, and then if you wanna make a motion along Lori's line, that's different.
Okay, so I'm still gonna continue with my same motion then to deny the lease of two thousand dollars.
Tom, do you wanna spend, uh, do you have any money to maintain trails? In your budget?
We were gonna have to find it if we paid the two thousand dollars.
That's my point.
We have the two thousand dollars in contingency.
Then.
Well, that, I was actually thinking of that question, I mean, do we have, I know it hasn't made it this far to exactly what it would be used for and therefore what it would cost us to maintain it, because no doubt it's gonna cost Tom some money.
Tom, how much money do you think you've spent on that park? Have you done anything to any of the trails in the last twenty years? Other than the main, the main, uh, walking trail? We haven't done any cutting, we haven't done anything there, so.
It's only on the main asphalt trail, but.
And we're still gonna do that. That's our easement and we have a right to be in there, correct? We need to continue to do that because we have a lot of kids walking to school there.
I mean, the potential cost of, you know, one, I've made the comment, I've walked that area shortly after the discussion came out. Uh, I've walked that area, there are part of the trails where you got duck underneath branches, you know, those would have to be trimmed, the county is willing to allow the, the city to trim those. There are, some of the pathways have erosion, somebody could walk through there, turn an ankle. You know, if you're not paying close attention to where they're walking, some of those paths would, in my opinion, would need to be repaired, then any erosion in some of those paths would need to be repaired, so it doesn't continue. Those are types of initial one-year or first-year investments without spending a lot of money that the Parks Department most likely would need to make. And as we would assess it, then, you know, where we do, uh, more, uh, more improvements to the trails themselves. But right now, it's pretty much a, a one-person pathway. It's, it'd be difficult for two people to walk side by side in a recreational sense that, you know, couples, a lot of couples are, with their families walk together or maybe bicycle, uh, could use those trails, uh, other than a single file consideration, so. That's my opinion, 'cause I've walked the trails, I took a close look at them.
It's a different thing too, when the city is leasing it and under that lease, you're taking on the, the maintenance responsibilities. All of a sudden, if someone gets hurt, they're looking to you, whereas if you're just doing it on your easement area and it's county land, the county retains responsibility. So, I think you do have to expect that, you need to look at it from a safety perspective if you're opening it as a city park, even under a lease. In terms of maintenance, it's not the same type of maintenance that you did before because you had no responsibility there.
And you're saying without a lease, we, they probably won't give us any authority to go in there and do any trimming of trees or?
Well, the city, will I never assume the responsibility or the liability of, uh?
Well, I don't know what you, you are, I don't think, as long as they're owning it and responsible for it, I think that's what's driving their concern.
Why shouldn't they go in there and trim the trees?
They're not taking care of any kind of safety considerations. And I'm just saying, you can't expect to do that same type of minimal maintenance when all of a sudden you're leasing it for a public park and you're inviting the public in. You're gonna have to expect to spend more, in my opinion, to make sure it's safe.
The county should go in and make, and deal with the safety issues, it should not be incurred upon us. This is just, to me, out of control. I just can't.
And then deny the lease, don't, don't accept it and let's move on.
That's what I made a motion, it's still on the table, I believe there's a second.
Well, the only thing I would add is, look, you could, if we had a dog park there and we had a disc golf there, you could charge user fees so that, that would help with the maintenance of the park. I mean, there are, there are other places, I, I used to play disc golf in Madison, you had to pay five bucks. Dog parks that you go to, you pay a user fee, so, um, the amount of money we would negotiate with the county, we could certainly recoup that cost by the simple use of the facility or, and/or the park. So, I mean, if we kinda think out of the box a little bit, that would be one option.
The county could do that, too.
They certainly could. And people could approach them as well with the same, uh, um.
That'd be a good idea for the county, you should, should suggest that to them.
So, I mean, I think we could recoup our costs regardless of what the lease amount was, um, you would think.
Okay. Rich? Any comments?
I, I, I made my comments last time when this came up and I think Danny did a good job going and the county came back with a, having the fee. When I look at the things that are going on in the city and the priorities that we have to take care of and all of those things, I guess I don't put this up at a big top priority item for me. I'm not sure I wanna get involved in this.
Okay. Kurt?
I think at this point, as was mentioned earlier, I feel like we'd be paying two thousand dollars to have trespassing signs taken down. Because I, I don't see what would change.
Okay. All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Danny.
Thanks, Danny.
Are we gonna do a second motion?
No, you're not gonna do it?
I'm not.
Any, uh, communication from the city attorney?
We need to do this resolution.
Okay.
Move to suspend the rules.
Second.
Roll call, please. Suspend the rules.
Yes.
Yes.
Yaku?
Yes.
Morset?
Yes.
Bernard?
Yes.
T Winkle?
Yes.
Okay, is there a motion to approve Resolution six A dash twelve?
I'll, I'll make a motion to approve Resolution six A dash twelve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Catherine, you wanna make any comments about?
It just updates, remember at the last time, it was outdated language and it, they're bringing it back with an updated contract, so. That's it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Updates. Any councilperson?
I would like to take this opportunity to invite everyone to the world's greatest event, Arbor Day, on Saturday, April twenty-eighth. Uh, we're gonna have all kinds of fun stuff, we got, uh, trees we're planting, we have tree pruning workshops, um, assuming the weather's better than it was last year. Should have a pretty good turnout, it's at White Camp Park. We're adding some trees to that, uh, tree-ready landscape, could use a few more. Um, and I think if you got the time, come out, it's from nine-thirty to two. The mayor's gonna make a proclamation and it's just gonna be a great time.
Okay.
Thanks.
City Attorney? City Administrator?
There is an election before the next council meeting, May eighth. The primary for the recall, regular polling places, seven AM to eight PM and we do have absentee ballots are available now, which you may vote through Friday, the, the Friday prior is the fourth. They can vote here at City Hall.
Any other councilperson? Motion to adjourn? Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
For adjourn, thank you.